Wasn't a great.
A big deal, but.
On the long person.
If you have a case, I think it is now.
Right. At first, you're going to do that. On most of you, without any second. And we already have. Well, get them. And this is all. And of course, there's a connector street across.
Wow, you could give a lot better.
No, I know, but I gave it town hall.
Excuse me, ma'am. Tick tock.
Yep.
None.
You wouldn't know that.
Is that right? And you don't want to see the deed. Hey, no, where that's going. If you tell the chapter, you may come.
Oh, do you want to change?
No. Do you want to? Do you want to?
Yes, I did. I just feel like. Why did you direct it to? Down the back. Um, Mr. Jett, like, man, please.
Yes, sir. Uh, sure.
Yeah, uh, hold on, hold on, let me get the right one. Wait. Where is the folder?
It's right.
I know, I meant to put it in the back. I got it, I got it. I put it in with the other stuff. This is. I know we're not quite ready, but I'm gonna. Is Sabrina Grisby here? Could you come up to this mic, please? Hi, bring the little, bring the, bring the little fellow. The little girl, why not?
Everybody's welcome.
She's running away. Here, she, up. Jerry, she sounds like you, buddy.
I know. It's crazy.
Is, uh, we're ready? All right. So we're here for the, this is the Zoning Board of Appeals meeting. This is the seven o'clock hearing. Uh, anybody else here on the, on the applicant of Sabrina Grisby? Uh, the property five eighty-nine Bedford Street. All right. I'm gonna read the public hearing. Hi. Uh, Town of East Bridgewater has only Board of Appeals notice of public hearing. The Board of Appeals will hold a public hearing on Wednesday, July tenth, two thousand twenty-four, at seven P. M. in East Bridgewater Junior Senior High School Auditorium, one forty-three Plymouth Street, on the petition of Sabrina Grisby, applicant slash owner, seeking a special permit according to section two, general provisions, A. A. A., non-conforming, single-family residential structure under zoning bylaws, and for all petitions and such other relief as the board may deem appropriate. The petitioner seeks to allow construction of a farmer's porch that would come thirty-two feet from the front yard setback for the property located at five eighty-nine Bedford Street and shown as map thirty-one parcel thirty-four on East Bridgewater Assessors Map, which is in business two, E. Two, Zoning District. Plans are on file for review at the Plan Building Department during normal business hours, five zero eight three seven eight one six zero eight. Notice published in the enterprise on Wednesday, June twenty-sixth, two thousand twenty-four, Wednesday, July third, two thousand twenty-four. So you're the applicant. So how this works is you're gonna tell us what you, what you would like to do or ask what relief you are getting from us. Oh, Sabrina Grisby. No, I know, yeah. Oh, yeah, I'm gonna have her introduce when she starts. And, um, we will, we may interrupt you. We have questions for you. Uh, after you made your presentation, if we have any more questions, we'll open it up to the audience. If they have any questions, the question to come through us. Uh, sorry for the setting, but we have a bigger meeting tonight. We just do this in town hall, and I apologize if we're looking down on you and stuff. Um, so introduce yourself, your address, and tell us what you are requesting.
Uh, I'm Sabrina Grisby. Uh, he is my husband, Joshua Grisby. Uh, we live in five eighty-nine Bedford Street. Uh, we just wanna do a farmer's porch in our house that will just replace an existing front deck that we already have. I guess, in, with our house, I don't, um, meet the setback, so.
So there's already a porch on the front of our house, like, an end.
Yeah, tell your name, please, for the record.
Sorry, Joshua Grisby.
Thank you.
Yeah, no worries. Um, yes, there's already a porch, it's already four feet, that's entering, like, our house. And basically, it would follow that same line. We're already, we're gonna, we're gonna do an addition on top of it, just for aesthetics. I mean, just to make it look nicer.
Okay, so the porch that's there.
Yeah.
It's already there, it's already the thirty-two feet, but you're gonna tear it down?
Yes.
Yes, you're gonna remove that, and it's gonna just extend across the front of the house.
But coming no closer to this.
No, it's gonna stay in the same spot as where the, the little porch, the little, there's a little deck in front of, on the front of our house. Yeah, it's four feet out.
Are you adding five feet to the existing porch?
No, it's gonna, so there's a, the front of our house, there's a, like, a small deck on front of it already. And then it's gonna be, like, we're taking that little, little deck off, and then you're gonna add a five-foot farmer's porch all the way across. There's already.
All right.
It's already a five, uh, five.
Don't worry about it.
Smaller deck already there. I think I know what you're talking, you're talking about the front of our house?
Yeah, but it shows, it shows a red five foot.
Yes, so right where that red is, there's already a small, little deck there, in that same, where that exists, where that red, uh, mark already is. But it'll be taken, it'll be taken out, and it'll basically be extended across the whole front. And done right. It's like, because right now, it's kinda of just like a, a janky little deck that's been.
Any questions?
No, sir.
Jerry?
Nope, I was there today.
Kevin? Jim?
Nope.
All right, I'm gonna open, anybody in the audience wanna speak on this application? Yeah, that's great, more than anything. Come on up, and one at a time. And when you come, you have to identify yourself and your address.
Okay, I'm Glenn Morton. My address is five fifty Bedford Street. I'm across the street from them. I just wanna say that this is a young couple. They came to our town. They're starting their family in our town. They've done a beautiful job on the house already, the property, and they just wanna improve it. And I think their problem with their setback is because, remember, Route eighteen was redone.
Yeah.
We all lost property in the front of our things. So I'd like you guys, ladies, to hopefully give them this, so that they can keep staying in our town, improving their property, and just bettering it for us in East Bridgewater. So, that's it.
All right, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Sir.
Good evening. My name is Jim Coffey. I surround the couple on all three sides. I own six oh seven, and I own five eighty-seven. And I would echo those sentiments. They're a very nice, they're a hard-working couple. The improvements have already made it tremendous. The place, the place looks great already, actually. So I think anything they would do would be an asset to the neighborhood, and I know that man would build it the right way. He's a serious carpenter. He takes things very seriously. The man works seven days a week in his yard, so I would urge you to support his project. Thank you.
Thanks, Jim.
Anybody else? Either way, for over again, it doesn't matter. Uh, any, any additional questions here by the board? Seeing none, I'll take the motion to, uh, close the hearing. Motion by Jerry. Second by Kevin, all favor. So here's what, we're gonna make a decision, but possibly not tonight, 'cause, um, we have to be out of here by ten, and we have a long, like, day. But I would ask you to check, daughter, you in tomorrow morning?
Yes, sir.
Check with the Building Department and ask for DOT.
Okay.
And she'll let you know.
Thanks, Doc.
I appreciate you coming, and see you later.
Thank you.
Oh, so one more thing, 'cause I get so busy here. So how the decision works is this. Uh, if we make, we make, we'll, if we make a decision tonight, or when we make a decision, if anybody's aggrieved by that decision, you have twenty days from the date that's stamped by the town clerk to appeal it to the courts.
Okay.
Any court you want to, except for, it's in Plymouth County.
Okay.
And, uh, and if we allow it, you have to wait twenty days. You go to town clerk, and they'll give you a, there's no appeal, and that's what you take to the registry of deeds. It has to be recorded before you can, before you can start.
Okay, perfect.
All right?
Thank you so much, appreciate it.
All right, thank you. Thanks for coming.
You've done some great work there. It looks good.
Oh, thank you, I appreciate it. You guys have a good night.
Good night. We have to wait a couple of minutes.
Uh, but Jeff, which one now?
What's that?
On which side? Yeah, it's on my left side. It's on the left end. Oh, that's where he lives. We have to wait a couple minutes, because you're, you're not scheduled until.
Two minutes.
Seven-ten, so.
Overexcited, I believe.
Let's try to, let's try to do it a bit. But there's no problem, so they have to come here. I thought, yeah, I thought if it's already, we're not, right, we're not gonna make, or if, if it's no more. Thought you'd finish already.
I don't know.
I don't know. All right. Yeah, you know what? I'm just gonna, we're gonna read all that. I've probably not, just easy to read them. Just ask, yeah, just as easy. That, that, what's Mr. Windsor looking for?
Uh, how was it today?
I appreciate that.
Seven-ten.
Seven-ten? Yeah, I can see that. Can't see that.
You're good.
Well, now, it's, we're here for the seven-ten hearing. I'm gonna read the public notice. Town of East Bridgewater has only Board of Appeals notice of public hearing. The Board of Appeals will hold a public hearing on Wednesday, July tenth, two thousand twenty-four, at seven-ten P. M. in East Bridgewater Junior Senior High School Auditorium, one forty-three Plymouth Street, on the petition of Greg Windsor, executor, applicant slash owner, seeking advantage for relief from section six location under the zoning bylaw, and for all petitions and such other relief as the board may deem appropriate. The petitioner seeks to allow construction of attached garage that would come seventeen feet from the side yard setback for the property located at three seventy-four Plymouth Street and shown ours as map thirty parcel eighteen dash zero on East Bridgewater Assessors Map, which is in the Residence One R. One Zoning District. Plans are on file for review at the Plan Building Department during normal business hours, five zero eight three seven eight one six zero eight. Notice published in the enterprise on Wednesday, June twenty-sixth, two thousand twenty-four, Wednesday, July third, two thousand twenty-four. Uh, Mr. Windsor, identify yourself and your address, please, and then, you heard the spiel about how it works. You know, you'll make your presentation, we'll, then his question will open up to the public.
Yep.
So why don't you, uh.
Okay, I'm Craig Windsor.
Name and address for the record.
Craig Windsor. I resigned at number three eighty-eight Plymouth Street, which is the closest butter to this project. I'm also responsible for the property at three seventy-four Plymouth Street. Uh, we built the house at three seventy-four as a retirement home for my parents approximately twenty-five years ago. Uh, my mom was able to stay in the home until her ninetieth birthday, so it worked out pretty good. Um, one thing we noticed during that period of her life, the lack of enclosed parking and access to the property, uh, to the house in the winter was, um, something that we could've done better on. So as the, uh, the next generation heads for this house, we're thinking the attached garage would be beneficial. Uh, it's a single-story ranch right now, a little over a thousand square feet, it's two bedrooms. The left side of the property has a steep grade to it. Um, a garage on that end would require a retaining wall and a substantial amount of fill. There's also question as to the, uh, how we would circumvent the septic system in the front yard if we were to go for the left side of the property. The right side, a twenty-four-foot garage would still require a variance of a foot, uh, coming off of the property, so we're thinking twenty-eight would allow some freedom of movement around the vehicle, especially if you need a, some kind of a stability aid, like a walker or a wheelchair. It gives you a little more room inside the garage. And I've scaled it. Apologize for the cartoon rendition, but I'm confident with the scale. The width of the existing home is exactly twenty-eight feet, so I took that width and I laid it across the front. Uh, so I'm pretty close on the five feet. I'm asking up for up to eight feet of relief on the twenty-five-foot setback, but the garage will be twenty-eight feet wide. So I just didn't wanna have to come back and say, you know, I was off by six inches or something like that, so. We will, uh, be happy to provide an engineered plan before the building permit is issued or an ASBIL after the fact. I would recommend for the permitting, so we don't build something that's not compliant.
Okay, thank you.
And the two properties, once the garage is corrected, uh, what, i- i- if the garage is constructed, the two buildings will still be sixty feet apart.
Six zero sixty?
Six zero, yes.
Thank you.
My house is, at three eighty-eight, is, um, only fifteen feet from the setback, so it's unlikely that house would ever expand that way, and they, they wouldn't expand far without needing relief, so that would be revisited if three eighty-eight was to expand in that direction.
And, and the driveway on the right side now?
The driveway on three seventy-four is on the right side where the garage is.
So the garage would be, the existing driveway would pour into it?
Yeah, it currently lines up.
All right, is, is the garage a one-level garage?
Yes, single-story. Uh, the bridge line will match.
It will line master.
The ridge line will match the existing house, and it will be a gable facing the driveway.
Okay.
The home is over, uh, approximately four hundred feet from Plymouth Street.
Yeah.
It's, uh, really only visible from three eighty-eight. It, it's not visible from the street. Limited visibility with any of the others.
Okay.
And there's no, no changes expected, uh, behind my house or, um.
Yeah, we would, we would, if we allow, we know they would require some type of ASBILs.
Yeah.
And we'd actually obviously have a plan, just to get with the file. When, if it's, you know, prior to you getting a permit, it's allowed. Like, if you'd have an ASBIL, you'd require one.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And we can do that, yeah, I mean, I would, I would propose that that, uh, engineered plan be required for the per.
Yeah, 'cause, 'cause obviously, if we give you the relief, we wanna make sure, you know, nobody takes advantage of anything else, just for everyone's sake.
Yep, yeah, definitely.
All right, uh, Greg, any questions?
No, sir.
Jimmy? Uh, Jimmy, Jerry?
That's fine. No, I mean, I was there today when I, once I found it, 'cause it is hard to find.
No, if a guy was scoping, he probably was him.
Yeah, it was me, black Jeep, it's all good.
It's in the back.
No, you actually covered what I was gonna ask you about, which was the septic and the slope of that land on that side, and, um, that was my only question, so, thank you.
Jim?
Nope.
All right, does anybody, uh, have any comments? Anybody here in the audience, have any, uh, here for, uh, three seventy-four Plymouth Street? All right, unless you need anything else, I'll, I'll close the hearing. I'll make a, you gotta maintain a motion to close, motion made by Jerry, second by Kevin, all in favor. All right, so you heard me explain how it works, that's, so, uh, you can check with DOT in the morning, depending on the time you get out of here. Uh, if a decision comes out, it's an aggrieved party, if they heard a decision, we'll decide, obviously, we can file with town clerk, and aggrieved party has twenty days from that day to, uh, appeal if they want, uh, to the courts. If there's no appeal, and we grant it, you have to wait twenty-day appeal period, you come in and get your, uh, from the town clerk saying there's no appeal, and you go to the registry of deeds, and you can record that.
Very good.
So you can check with her, uh, in the morning.
Okay.
To see if we did it.
Have a good night.
All right, all right, thank you.
Have a good night.
We have to wait till the appropriate time to start the next hearing. You don't have to be silent now, you just have to be silent when I start the meeting, so. Feel free to talk to your neighbor. It's okay. This is the longest I've been quiet in my sixty-five years. Yeah, there you go. School's not in session, so if I don't have the air conditioning on, it's very warm in here. Yeah. All right, being seven-twenty, is Mr. Tucker here? Mr. Tucker, why don't you come on and have a seat at this table? And if you hear me, I said we're normally not this impersonal, but because this is being televised and whatnot, we have to set up this way.
No problem.
So, um, I don't know if you heard how it works, you know, you have to introduce yourself with your name and address.
Yes.
I'm gonna read the hearing first.
Okay.
But then you get to make your presentation. We may interrupt or ask questions, and we'll open up if the, if the, anybody in the public has any questions.
Sure.
All right, so I'm gonna read the public. Town of East Bridgewater has only Board of Appeals notice of public hearing. The Board of Appeals will hold a public hearing on Wednesday, July tenth, two thousand twenty-four, at seven-twenty P. M. in East Bridgewater Junior Senior High School Auditorium, one forty-three Plymouth Street, on, on the petition of Joe Tucker, applicant owner, seeking a special permit according to section two, general provisions, provisions, A. A. A., non-conforming, single-family residential structure under zoning bylaw, and for all petitions and such other relief as the board may deem appropriate. The petitioner seeks to allow construction of a family room that would come thirteen-point-three feet from the side yard setback, and eleven-point-six feet from the rear yard setback, which would be located at fifty-one Wildwood Ave, and shown as map eighty-one parcel thirty-seven on East Bridgewater Assessors Maps, which is in the zoning business two, B-dash-two Zoning District. Plans are on file for review at the Plan Building Department during normal business hours, five zero eight three seven eight one six zero eight. Notice published in the enterprise on Wednesday, June twenty-sixth, two thousand twenty-four, Wednesday, July third, two thousand twenty-four. Mr. Tucker?
So we are seeking to build a family room off the back of our existing property, and I apologize, I didn't know I think I would have to be at, my contractor.
Can you speak up just a little bit?
Sure, my contractor said that he was gonna.
I know the necko.
Be here tonight, and, um, sprung on me in the last minute that I would have to go and talk to you guys. Um, he's on vacation.
Can you speak into the microphone, please?
Sure. So we're seeking a family room that is gonna be thirteen-point-three feet, uh, from the side setback. That is the current setback of our existing, um, single-family right now, which is all obviously non-conforming. We are not gonna move that. It's gonna be directly connected to that. The back setback would be eleven-point-six feet, and behind that is woods. Other than that, it's a twenty-four by twenty, uh, just addition, family room. The reason why we are putting it, hoping to put it in that position, is because we have a small lot, um, eight thousand square feet. There simply isn't another place for us to put it. The only other place would be directly over our septic, um, so we can't do that. But with the eight thousand square feet we have, um, this is our only option. Uh, we have a growing family, so we're hoping to be able to expand just our living space a little bit. That's all I'm up for.
Thank you. So I, I think I heard you right. Your septic right is on the side of the, uh, 'cause you have a setback on Wildwood.
Yeah, so our house was originally one, uh, our lot was originally one lot, from what I understand. If you look at, at the plot, it's essentially a pork chop. One family owned this, and then they cut out our lot out of it. That's why it's seven thousand eight hundred and forty square feet, which is obviously quite small. So essentially, we're surrounded by our neighbor Owens behind us and to our left as well, so, um, we have a good relationship with him, so I'm not concerned with, you know, in terms of that, but it's, it's all woods the back anyways.
So your, your present house is eight feet from the side, right? Eight point eight feet, eight inches? I'm gonna look on the, if you, so right now, the sideline setback's only eight feet, eight inches now.
Is it?
Anyway.
I'm, I'm just going by this here.
Oh, I'm going by the plan, somebody, some of your engineers submitted.
Okay.
Who's that, Joe Webby, your engineer?
I mean, that was.
Somebody from his office?
That was in two thousand five, right?
Yeah, I'm looking at a plan that was submitted.
Okay.
You got that?
So our neighbors have had a couple instrument surveys done, and every one that, that comes gives us a different plot, essentially.
Yeah, all right, but this, I know this company, they submitted this plan, so.
Yeah.
It says eight feet, so you're already a non, big non-conforming.
Oh, absolutely.
All right. Greg, any questions?
That's all he's interested in, is back here, not on the side, right?
Yeah, so, so, right, but he is asking for a side yard, but he's already, he's already, he's already.
He's already non-conforming, he's less, he's less non.
So it's the backyard.
Right.
But he's.
That's it.
Yeah, he's suggesting, based on your representation, if you, if you, if I miss on, that the septic's over here.
Yep.
So the only place you really can put an addition is on the back.
Yeah, exactly.
Any questions, then?
No, sir.
Jerry, you saw, you, you went down and saw.
Yep, I was down there today, just, if you saw me there, I was in the Jeep again, just, uh, tough to take a look in the backyard, 'cause you do have some good coverage in the back. I think my biggest question is, in the winter, who shovels that driveway? 'Cause it's all one driveway, so, but don't have to answer that.
We have two, we have two smoke blowers.
But, uh.
Yes, the blonde over there does it.
I would just be, uh, make sure you're certain with the measurements that you want, right? Because when we give you those measurements.
If we give it to you.
If we give it to you, you're stuck with it, so like, you know, we, you're saying, like.
Well, they're stuck with what he's asking, if we give it to him, he's stuck with what he's asking for, 'cause the hearing's tonight.
Yeah.
So he, so.
Yeah, all right.
If we, if we give it to him, so we're gonna give him X number of feet, if we grant it, and he just, he's stuck with. So, I mean, again, we, we don't, you know, we're not gonna, I mean, this is what they asked for.
Yeah, okay. I'm good, I was down.
Kevin?
Just to clarify, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Just to clarify what you said there, so the, when you say give, um, what I asked for, that's.
So you're seeking relief.
Okay.
From the rear yard setback.
Okay.
All right, so.
I, I was just concerned about the discrepancy between what you had with the eight and then the thirteen-point-three, because.
I see that thirteen-point-three is on the, is on the proposed new addition.
Okay.
All right, on the front of your house that exists now, to the side.
Okay.
Is eight feet, eight inches.
I see, so it must be at an angle.
It's at an angle.
Okay, all right.
Maybe you don't notice it, but I'm, I'm, this is a plan drawn, uh, it was May.
Okay.
By Webby Engineering.
Okay.
Down in Plimpton. And they submitted this plan with the implication, and it shows eight feet, eight inches already. So from my perspective, the sideline, to me, is a non-issue, because you already are more non-conforming than what you're actually seeking. So, from my perspective, the sideline, to me, is a non-issue, because you already are more non-conforming than what you're actually seeking. So, the, the backyard sort of is, is the bigger question.
Okay.
And you're presenting to us that the hardship is obviously shape of the lot, to progress, uh, uh, because obviously your septic is on side, you know? And I don't, would never put, make anyone put an addition over a cesspool, I'm not sure you can even do it anymore, I don't think it's allowed, um, of septic system. All right, Kevin?
I'm good.
Jim?
No questions.
Anybody in the audience have any comments or questions regarding this application? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to close the hearing, motion made by Jerry, second by Kevin, all in favor? All right, so how this works, I don't know if you heard, Mr. Tucker, we may make a decision tonight, I can't guarantee it, because the next hearing is what all these people are here for. But you can check with Dart in the morning at the planning building office, um, and the numbers, the number you saw on the application. Uh, if, if you have an aggrieved party by a decision, you have a right to appeal that decision, but you have to do it within twenty days from the day it's stamped by the court. There's no twenty-one days, this is the, one of the few things the court adheres to, the twenty-day, uh, strict twenty-day notice. And if no, if nobody appeals, and we grant it, after the twentieth day, you have to go to town hall, town clerks, they'll give you a piece of paper, there's nobody appeals, you're going to record that through registry of deeds, and you can go then see and get your building permit. And you'll get, you're going to get, you'll get an explanation, when the, and, um, you'll get it, when the decision's made, you'll, there'll be an explanation. All right?
Thank you so much.
All right, thank you. Oh, yeah, that's the important thing. Thank you. I should grab that big, uh.
Yeah, you got it.
Yeah, I'll hear for you, Mr. Freeman. I assume you're Mr. Freeman?
I am, thank you.
All right, it's, uh, I'm going to, I'm going to make a brief, because these people here, so. This, this hearing's a seven-thirty hearing, this is a, a petition, an application by the applicant to, to, on a comprehensive permit, just for explanation for people, because I don't do Facebook or anything, as many people know me, but a couple things, this is, there's nothing to do, I've heard some people talk about, there's nothing to do with the MBTA, thing that we have to do with the town, this is a comprehensive permit, it's, it's under the affordable housing, uh, it's regulated by the state. Tonight, and I'll, I'll, I'll read the whole thing in a minute, but just let people know that this is what we're here on tonight. Uh, we will probably, I'm going to let you, right now, know, we'll not make a decision tonight in this hearing, I don't think anyone expects us to. This is the first time we have any interaction with the hearing. This board that sits here is a voluntary board, uh, most of us have been here for a long time, we do have, for reference, we do have another forty-B already built, it's called Wayside Farm, if you know where that is, on Route eighteen, it's across from this, uh, proposed project. That was allowed, uh, a long time ago, but I sat on that. And, uh, this is the same thing what they're here tonight, this is a long drawn-out process, tonight's going to be just, uh, like a more meet and greet, so we can understand what they, they're proposing, there'll be no decisions made, uh, and we will go from there. Do I have a? And so before we start, I'm going to read the notice of public hearing. Uh, Town of East Bridgewater Zoning Board of Appeals, notice of public hearing. The Board of Appeals will hold a public hearing on Wednesday, July tenth, two thousand twenty-four, at seven-thirty P. M. In the East Bridgewater Junior Senior High School Auditorium, one forty-three Pleasant Street. On the petition of J.S.C. Holdings, LLC, applicant slash owner, requesting the East Bridgewater Zoning Board of Appeals to grant a comprehensive permit, residences at Meadowbrook, to construct eighty townhouse-style homeownership units. Twenty units will be affordable off Winter Street, and one hundred and sixty rental apartments units, and four multifamily buildings. Forty-four zero rental units will be affordable off North Bedford Street. Property located eight forty-eight, nine zero six North Bedford Street, and shown as map one oh eight, parcel eleven, map one oh nine, parcel ten, and map one nineteen parcels three and nine, on the East Bridgewater assessment map, which is an industrial and residential one, hour one zoning district. The applicant seeks a comprehensive permit according to the Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter forty-B, Sections twenty dash twenty-three, and General Laws of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, Chapter forty-eight, Section one dash seventeen, one through seventeen, AKA the Zoning Act, and the Town of East Bridgewater zoning bylaw. Application plans are on file for review at the planning slash building department during normal business hours, five zero eight, three seven eight, one six zero eight. Also on the Town of East Bridgewater website under Zoning Board of Appeals. Notice published in the enterprise on Wednesday, June twenty-sixth, two thousand twenty-four, Wednesday, July third, two thousand twenty-four. So, Mr. Freeman, if you'd introduce yourself and state your address, your office address.
Sure, certainly, thank you, Mr. Chairman, board members. For the record, I am Peter Freeman from Freeman Law Group in Yarmouthport, Massachusetts. I represent the applicant, and our team is here tonight. Rob Celiberty is the principal of J.S.C. Holdings. Our engineer from Merrill Engineering is Brendan Sullivan, uh, the engineer who primarily worked on the project. Deb Keller couldn't be here because of a long planification, but she'll certainly come, uh, to the next hearing. And then on traffic, we have Jeff Bandini from Niche Engineering, our architect, Andy Zaleski from Zio Architects. We did submit the plans naturally, he's not here tonight, we didn't think it was necessary, we will show the plans, but certainly, uh, we can have them available at the next hearing, or anytime when you have questions. Uh, so in a nutshell, as the ad that you just read stated, the proposal is for two hundred and forty units, multifamily units. They are divided into, uh, separate lots for the different components. There will be eighty townhouse units, which are homeownership units, and for twenty-five percent, which is twenty units of those, will be affordable. And all of the affordable units are for folks earning up to eighty percent of their median income, both for the townhouse units and for the rental. And that means that they're earning roughly, depending on household size, between eighty, ninety thousand dollars, that's the income limit. And on the multifamily four buildings for the apartments, uh, because under the state law, all apartment units under forty-B, even the market units count towards the town, town subsidized housing inventory, which is now at three point three nine percent, with the target under the law being ten percent. Uh, in this project, all one hundred and sixty of the apartment units will count on the S.H.I. plus the twenty units from the townhouses, so that will be a hundred and eighty units that will really give a good boost to the town's ten percent. And again, I stress for you folks and for the audience, that seventy-five percent of all of the units are at market rents, and the twenty-five percent affordable are for folks earning, basically, that they are employed, they have to earn eighty to ninety thousand dollars, roughly, uh, that's the income limit. So, the team will go over more of the project details, uh, but I wanted to explain that aspect also, as we have submitted the various plans. We are asking that the site be subdivided, as I indicated a few minutes ago, so that each of the condominium sections will be on a separate lot. There'll be separate condo associations or homeowner associations, and then there's a separate lot for the multifamily units, which are the apartments. Uh, so just a few more things that I want to go over before turning it over to the other members of the team. The pro, project eligibility is based on the low in, I'm sorry, on the local initiative program. And what that means, it's a project, uh, program with the state, used to be D.H.C.D., now it's Executive Office of Housing and Livable Communities, E.O.H.L.C. Uh, in any event, we worked for quite a while with a select board in the town and the various departments, uh, and we believe, as the select board has indicated in their support letter, that this is a mutually beneficial project for the town and the applicant, because the town wanted to gain access to the Brockton sewer system, so that you could expand your sewer into this area, I believe, it's called either North Bedford and New Bedford Sewer District. Uh, and my client has already granted, uh, over the property that is the subject of this application, a sewer easement, there's a long sewer agreement as well, and I submitted those documents with our application, so you would be able to review them to any extent that you wish. Uh, and my client also already granted an easement, so that a landlocked portion that the town owns, basically near the site, that was landlocked, they couldn't get to it, now they have access by virtue of the agreements we reached with the town, and those documents have already been recorded at the registry of deeds. So, the select board naturally believe that's a big plus for the town to be able to implement that sewer expansion over the property. Uh, and of course, in exchange, they supported the, uh, the, the project through the so-called local initiative program, LIP, acronym as we always use. So, the only other thing that I would just quickly mention is the so-called jurisdictional requirements whereby, in order, actually, in order to apply, and the state looks at this first off, you have to be a limited dividend entity, and that means that the applicant agrees to abide by the regulatory agreement that will be signed later after approval, uh, not being presumptuous, but hopefully with approval and the project getting built, my client will enter into that regulatory agreement and agrees to abide by the limited dividend provisions, so that's step one. Step two is control of the land, and in this case, the applicant actually owns the land. Often, uh, purchase and sale is sufficient, but in this case, the applicant actually owns the land. And then the third component relates to the project eligibility letter that I referred to. In order to apply, you have to show that you are considered fundable by a subsidizing agency. The new E.O.H.L.C., formerly D.H.C.D., is such an agency, and we submitted the copy of the project eligibility letter that they granted for the project. Uh, so those are the points that I wanted to go over, just one other thing, as I'm sure you know, our request for waivers is very important, and it's one of the fundamental aspects of forty-B. Uh, we believe that the waivers we asked for do not create any adverse impact that helps the project, and we believe it still complies with all of the state laws and other factors that would show, as we'll hear from our engineers, in any peer review that you might have, uh, that it is all positive. So, my custom is that usually, we don't go over the waivers the very first night, we included them. If you have questions on the match, we were, of course, happy to answer them any time, but we, I usually find that it makes more sense, because as the chairman said, we're going to do basically introduction tonight, and then we'll be back for at least one more hearing, if not more. Uh, so that's just my suggestion, but we're happy to deal with anything that we've submitted, uh, tonight after the presentations. So, without further ado, I will turn it over first to Brendan, and I, are they going to be projecting the plans, Brendan?
Uh, yes, I think Candace is in.
Do you have something on the screen? We're going to get off, we're going to get, go, get off the, you, you ready for that, are we ready for the presentation on the screen? All right, we're going to step down.
Sure.
So that I don't get it blind into my eyes.
I know, uh, so Candace, if we could get, uh, phase one, the title sheet? Perfect. So, once again, as Peter said, Brendan Sullivan from Merrill Engineers and Land Surveyors out of Hanover, Massachusetts, uh, sitting in for Deb Keller. Um, I'll get through these as best I can. So, the entire site is a seventy-four acre site, it's located in the north side of town, uh, bordering Bedford Street, which is Route eight, North Bedford Street, which is Route eighteen, um, and Winter Street, um, to the west, approximately, as I said, about seventy-four acres. Um, the wetlands are delineated by the blue lines, uh, there's many more wetlands and uplands in between these parcels as well. Um, there was an ANRAD approved by the Conservation Commission in two thousand twenty-two, which approved the wetland delineation, so the wetland delineation line has been approved by the Conservation Commission. This comprehensive permit includes two hundred, a total of two hundred and forty units, as Peter said, twenty-five percent will be affordable, which is a total of sixty units. Uh, we built in four phases, one phase will be off of Winter Street, and then there's three other phases off of North Bedford Street, Route eighteen. The, uh, phase one will have one curb cut on Winter Street, uh, phases three will have a curb cut, and phase, phase three and four will share a curb cut off of Route eighteen. Um, and those curb cuts on Route eighteen are under Mass Highway jurisdiction, they will need to be permitted through Mass Highway. Uh, phase one, um, is a townhouse-style, um, development, uh, with, um, eighty units, twenty of which will be affordable, uh, broken up into three separate lots with their own onsite septic systems. Um, there is a wetlands crossing, um, to gain access to additional upland, uh, from Winter Street. Um, the townhouse-style units are, are three-bedroom, uh, with one-car garage and one exterior parking space. Um, stormwater runoff is controlled by on, by both onsite, um, subsurface and, and surface, uh, controls to attenuate surface, uh, infiltration runoff. Uh, roadways are paved with a Cape Cod berm and a sidewalk on one side. Scroll through some of the pages here, this is the lot layouts, um, so I'm sorry for the blurriness of the screen, but this is the entrance off of Winter Street, um, as it meanders around, uh, coming to a, a dead-end cul-de-sac, uh, another small dead-end cul-de-sac up to the west. There are two bus stops included in this area, uh, one here, and there's another one, uh, over toward the Winter Street at, um, intersection. A siltation sock will, um, will be, will encompass the entire work area, um, and lighting and landscaping, uh, will be provided on the roadway and within the units themselves. Candace, if we could pull up the, uh, maybe the landscape plan, and I could just run through the landscape plan for this area? So, this is, this is the typical, um, so this is the landscape plan coming off of Winter Street, there's a surface detention pond here. Most of the units are going to be duplex, uh, with, actually, so as I said, the one-car garage and the one parking space in front, uh, the wet, the wetland crossing, um, and down to the cul-de-sacs on either end, uh, planting details as shown. And then this is the typical planting plan for the duplexes, um, you know, various shrubbery around in the front. And Candace, if we could go to the, um, the architecturals, um, I can give you an idea of what the units, the typical units are going to look like. So, this is the buildings in phase three or four, so this is, this is, this is kind of cut off up here, but this is the typical townhouse-style unit with the, with the doors in the front and the parking in the front of what the unit will, will, what the unit will look like, um, for the, each unit has, uh, has three bedrooms as well, so. So, that's it for phase one, we can move on to phase two, Candace, if we go to phase, the civil two drawings? Great, so phase two is down in the lower right-hand corner, adjacent to Route eighteen. Let me get the, so this is the, this is probably the best layout plan. So, phase two is one four-story multifamily apartment building containing forty units, um, ten of which will be affordable, uh, made up of one, two, and three-bedroom units. Fifty-two parking spaces in total, uh, four are accessible, thirty-five are located in the basement of the building, we have, we have parking in the basement of the building, and we also have surface parking. Um, there's fifteen surface parking spaces and includes, also includes two, uh, two loading delivery spaces as well. Snow stores provided, fire truck turnaround, and trappers septic gold with enclosure located. Um, this will be serviced by, um, municipal water and sewer, uh, once again, stormwater control will be, will be controlled onsite, um, with subsurface stormwater controls, uh, infiltration systems. Um, there will be a bus stop located within the site, so there's no need to have a bus stop on Route eighteen. Lighting, trees, and landscaping provided, um, around the building and the parking areas. Candace, if we could go back to the, maybe the, uh, landscape plan first, I can give you an idea of what the landscape plan would look like for, uh, the phase. Oh, there it is there, that's phase three, so there's phase two, uh, there's the parking area, uh, trees around the front, um, landscaping along the, uh, westerly side, um, and around the rear of the building as well. So, that's really about it for, uh, phase two. Candace, if we can go to the architecturals, give you an idea what the, outside of the building looks like? Uh, so that's the townhomes, so this is, these are the side elevations of this four-story building. Um, this is the, the front of the four-story building. And that's the roof structure, uh, typical interior layouts, and parking in the basement area. So, that about does it, does it for, uh, phase two. So, if we go back to the civil drawings for phase three, um, phase three will be similar, uh, to phase two, which is afforded, so it's a single, uh, single building, forty units, uh, ten, ten, uh, of the units are affordable. Uh, this is just north on Route eighteen, uh, from phase two. This is just north on Route 18 from Phase Two. So this one is made up, once again, as I said, is similar to Phase Two, where it has one, two, and three-bedroom units. There's 50 parking spaces in total. There's 31 in the basement, and there are 17 surface spaces with two accessible and two loading delivery spaces. Snow storage, fire truck turnaround provided. Once again, this is also serviced by municipal water and sewer. Stormwater, stormwater controls are controlled onsite by surface and subsurface stormwater controls. The access to this one to Route 18 will be shared with Phase Four. There will be a bus stop, as I said, located onsite as well to keep the bus traffic off of Route 18, and lighting and landscaping provided in the building and parking areas, similar in nature to, to Phase Two. So if we could go to the civil drawings on Phase Four? So Phase Four, once again, the building is similar in style as Phase Two and Three, except there's going to be two, two buildings on this, on this location. So there's two buildings here. There will be, there's no garage parking in these units. So once again, two 40-unit, four-story buildings, 20 affordable units, made up once again of one, two, and three-bedroom units. There's also a gym, community center, and a rental office here, as well as a outdoor swimming pool. There's also a sewer pump station located on this lot as well. There, on this site, there's a total of 130 surface parking spaces. 114 of those will be residential. There's four loading delivery spaces, nine for the gym, and three for the wastewater pump station. Once again, snow storage, fire truck turnarounds, and tracts receptacles are provided in this location, serviced by water and sewer. Stormwater runoff controlled by onsite subsurface infiltration systems. And access will be shared, as I said, to Route 18 from Phase Three. So there'll be one access point for Phase Three and Four. The bus stop will be located onsite. And Candace, if we could maybe pull up the landscape plan for this one as well? So that's the Phase, this is Phase Two lands, Phase Two landscape. There's Phase Three, once again, showing landscaping trees around, adjacent to Route 18. In Phase Four shows the two units, landscaped islands. And I believe that's about it. Maybe if I could turn it off to, turn it over to Jeff Bandini for any comments on traffic? Oh, sure. Okay, the... Sure. Candace, the architecturals. So this is the basement of the buildings, first floor, second floor, roof plan. So there it is there. Oh, okay. Oh, the cover sheet, okay. Oh, you were probably talking about the cover sheet. Oh, this, that one there, okay. Yes.
The apartment building.
Yes, the apartments, yep. Okay.
Do you have anything on the slides? If no slides?
No slides. Hey, go back.
Just so you know, that's, we're going to stay down there so they can hear us. We have trouble with the echo hearing up here. So if we miss anything, they can fill us in. Identify yourself for the record.
Absolutely. For the record, Jeff Bandini, Senior Project Manager with Niche Engineering, formerly of McMahon/Bowman, that produced the traffic study. So I was in charge of producing this traffic study, so I'm familiar with the contents and the methodology used within the study. So Brendan did a nice job of going over some of the site plans and some of the site driveways, which was a lot of the focus on what we wanted to center our traffic study around, is just understanding the, the project access. And the idea of the traffic study is to look at some of the data and safety that's, you know, surrounds the study area, just to understand the scope of the study and see if there's any sort of mitigation or anything that would need to be presented as part of this, as part of the study. So we collected data along both Route 18 and on Winter Street, which is where the primary access points for all four phases will be located. So we collected that data and looked at the average daily traffic and also compared the 85th percentile speed, which is a key factor in, in understanding the stopping site and intersection site distance, which is the primary, you know, sort of way that we look at the safety surrounding the proposed intersections. So we also looked at the existing crash data for the last five years of available data from Mass DOT, found that there were no existing safety deficiencies in crashes in the vicinity of the proposed site driveways. And that basically just understands that there's very limited geometric issues around the existing conditions. We looked at the proposed number of trips that the project will generate. This project benefits fairly well from being able to split out the different pieces of the project into not only the different phases, but assigning them to the different site driveways as a result of the way that the project is phased between the multiple driveways on Route 18 and also the driveway on Winter Street as well. So looking at the project as a whole, we found during the highest peak hour would be 124 new vehicle trips. And again, as I mentioned, that includes entering, exiting, and that's split between the three driveways, and it also includes vehicle trips that would be distributed to the north as far as vehicles leaving towards, say, Boston in the morning, and then turning right into the site driveways, say, returning from Boston in the afternoon. So given that, we looked at the average daily traffic along Route 18, compiled with the peak hour traffic within that data, and found that the impact on the Route 18 and site driveway operations and operations along Winter Street, not site driveway, were fairly insignificant during the peak hour timeframes, understanding that there would be no significant vehicle operational deficiencies within that timeframe. I did mention we collected the 85th percentile speed as far as, during the ADT collection, and found that the 85th percentile speed, which is the speed at which 85% of the vehicles are traveling at or below, was slightly higher than the speed limit, 48 miles an hour. So we use that as a key factor in determining what the baseline site distance recommendation for intersection site distance and requirement for stopping site distance would be. And when you combine those two metrics, given what we measured in the field based on available site distance data, we found that, that the amount of required site distance is exceeded based on what's out there today. Route 18 is a fairly, fairly flat, fairly straight roadway, and the Winter Street site driveway is located in a, in a location where that is the case there as well. Brendan did mention that the Route 18 curb cuts are within the Mass DOT regulations, so this project, if we were to receive approval, would have to go through the Mass DOT permit process, in which Mass DOT would look at the functionality of the driveway and sort of the pedestrian connections. As Brendan mentioned, there's a proposed sidewalk. So Mass DOT would look at the functionality of those driveways, make sure that the width is proper, make sure the site distance is proper, and, and have another sort of cut at the apple in terms of how they want to review our data, and they would request any sort of follow-up information if need be, prior to issuing their permit. That's all I had for you this evening. Be happy to answer any, any questions you may have.
How many cars did you say that you looked at at that hour from peak traffic? Did you say how many cars were going by? Is that what you said?
During the peak hour? Yeah, so we have, Route 18 was about 17,000 per day. The peak hour number is obviously less than that. During the highest peak hour would be 815, traveling southbound on Route 18 during the weekday afternoon peak. So again, you know, looking at how those volumes are assigned, that's a fairly insignificant percentage of the total volume on Route 18.
Thank you.
Thank you. So that's all we have for tonight to present, and as, as Jeff said, on any aspect of what we presented, happy to answer any questions. You know, just also because I am curious if you are going to have peer review, because I think there was a fee collected for it. I don't know if you are going to discuss that, but if you do it, it would be great to help, you know, expedite, keep things moving to, to address that at some point.
Yeah, so, so our plan is we're gonna get an engineer for us. I did reach out today, I haven't heard back from the gentleman that we're going to use it. The town has used them before, am I correct? The planning board has used them. So I did reach out to him today, but I had not heard back from him. Hopefully he'll call me back tomorrow. I'm not precluding anybody from speaking, but it, but it's more of a, here's a presentation tonight because it's going to get more in-depth. And we'll hire our own engineer to review some of the stuff they have done. It's called a peer review. Basically, they, they review what, what these people have presented to us. We have to enter into contract with them. Part of that, they have nothing to do with it, but we kind of make them to pay for some of it, and I think they've already submitted some funds. And we, we make sure that what they're presenting, if we allow it, is actually what they're presenting, that's what, that's what the peer review is. They review other people's work. Similar type of Mr. Freeman and I reviewed each other's work as attorneys would be peer review. So that, that's why this is an initial stage. I, I hope this doesn't take as long as Wayside, because I think that took almost a year to get through. But again, the town, for, for people's reference, the town currently sits, I think the number, and Mr. Goddard from Planning Board can tell us, means like 237th in the town, in the state, for affordable housing. It's nothing to do with low income, it's affordable housing. Out of 350 towns and cities, we said 237th, we have 3.9%. Those numbers are, are on the state website, you can check, so, you know, and to, to not have affordable housing built forced upon you, you have to have over 10%. So we have, we actually, we have a long way to go to even hit 10%. I want to make sure that people heard, Mr. Freeman, because I was going to bring this up, that apartment buildings, so it's 160 units, 40 of those will be affordable, but all 160, the town gets credit for. It's just the way the system works with the state. So on the townhouse, which is going to be owner-occupied or owned, they, we only get credit for the 20 that would be affordable, because they're owned. But for the apartments, because it's rental, the town will get credit for 160 units, even though only 40 are affordable. Are you read it too, Mr. Freeman?
Yes, correct.
Yeah. So while, while I hesitate to put them on the spot now, I was, I will open for sort of limited questions for what we saw tonight, because we are not going to make a decision tonight. I tell you that right now. This is a process. I, I fear to say that, that it probably, something's going to happen, because again, having 3.9%, there, there are what they call safety harbors that the state has, again, I would think, fancy name of safety harbors is exclusions or exemptions. We don't qualify for any of them in this town because of our low numbers and, and what they're planning. They're under a threshold that would, that would require more detail if they went over 300, some based on number of housing units we have in the town, but we're not, we're not, we don't have, we don't have any exemptions, other than the fact that we have the ability of zoning, and other town boards, as we progress, other town boards are going to participate. Planning Board's here tonight. I don't know if Mr. Handel's here tonight, but he was going to be here. I don't know if he made it. I've talked to the school department. They project, and then these numbers, they will clarify as they come, maybe if we get into it, that the impact in the schools, they project roughly 60 to 80 new students, and they base that, or they have studies that are based on how many houses, well, as... Wait a second, please. Wait a second, it does sound low, you're right. But from what I understand, we're down 230 in the past five years. I don't know the exact numbers, that's why we're going to, we're going to have them come here and present what they have. That's the numbers that were given to me in a conversation. I, I don't have it in front of me. But what I'm, what I'm just saying is, so this is where we are tonight, that we're going to, you know, if anybody has any, any questions that sort of limited in scope as to what we've done, I'll entertain them briefly. We, we are here on a limited time because we're here tonight. So I, I, and I, and as chairman, and not being mean, if it's sort of out of the scope of tonight, I may just say we have to get that addressed at the next meeting. Do we have a, just so I can, before, do we have a, are we meeting on August 7th, do we know? Is that, we want to make sure if that's, is August 7th? We don't have anything else on our agenda that night, so you would be it.
Mr. Chairman, just one quick question on the outside chance of conflict with the engineer you're likely to hire. If I may ask the name of that engineer and firm?
I can't.
On the outside chance of conflict for the engineer that you're going to hire as peer review, could I ask the name and firm of that peer review engineer?
Oh, yeah, we can give them the name of the engineer.
I couldn't hear?
Environmental partners?
Oh, okay.
Scott Turner's the person Mike contacted. So, so August 7th, we'll be meeting. The problem with meeting here is that it echoes up here, so that's why I remember sitting down there. We met here, thank you, weren't sure of the number of crowds. I think we have no choice though, because the community center's not available, August 7th, so we would have to arrange with the schools to come here again, I think. Maybe we can turn the air conditioner on before we get here? And I, and again, I don't, I don't like being up here in these things, because again, we can't fully hear you, but I guess maybe we can figure something else out, I don't know, but for cable purposes and mics, we have to do it this way, I guess. I don't know, maybe we can talk to the cable company. So I, I will entertain some limited questions there, but I'm not going to make them on, put them on the spot this time, because we're still progressing. General, make sure you look like you're ready to, so you got to come up and introduce yourself and your address, please.
Peter Filoni, 20 Plain Street. The traffic study was done during COVID, so I don't know how that's any good. First, that's my first point.
All right. Clear questions?
Really, my first point is, I know this is going to go through, we have to do what's best for the town. That's really what we have to do, is what's best for the town. The fair first phase, every pitch, every house in the first phase that's online is a triplex, triplex, except for one. Every picture that was shown tonight is a duplex. Can somebody please explain what's going to be built?
Which one of you general like to address that? The plan I think shows duplexes.
The duplex show was just a general rendering of what was, what's going to be proposed. Some of them are going to be duplexes, some of them are going to be triplexes, as you men, you mentioned.
Guys, people, we gotta, we can't hear six different people speaking.
But in the picture that was online, the maps that were online, there was only one duplex, and everything else was triplex. What is being built, is all I'm asking. I mean, the, the one that was just flashed through tonight was, everything was duplexes, except for like maybe one or two is what it looked like.
Right.
Just identify yourself, please.
How you doing? Good evening. Rob Celery, developer. I own the property. So it's, you have to refer to the site plan? So when you refer to this...
That's what, that's what I was looking at, was the site plan.
So when you, when you refer to the site plan, they show duplexes, triplexes, et cetera, and that rendering of that elevation would show the typical duplex.
So, so here, here's the short answer. Whenever they propose, has to come before, it's like, we have to see what they're going to do. Right, you're going to send us, you're going to say we're building X number duplexes, X number triplexes?
It clearly shows on the civil drawings.
Yeah, but that's the same, but you're going to...
If we could pull it up, I could show you, but if you look at the civil drawings, it shows all the duplexes, all the triplexes, et cetera.
This is, this is why I stay off the internet.
Well, I added it, I added up by the one that was online.
Yeah, and we'll, and we'll, we'll get to that, because I say, I, I, you know, want to know exactly with the two-bedroom, three-bedroom, and all that stuff too, so that'll all be conservative. Tonight, like I said, was sort of a presentation. I got... I got the impression, and I think the board member, I don't wanna speak to you, based on what we've got, that most of them are gonna be duplexes.
Yeah, on the plans, when you, when you take a look at the plans, just like Phase One, Phase Two, et cetera, give the breakdown of everything. So you just gotta take a look at the drawings, and if you want us to show it to you, or we could, we could show it to you.
Well, I have the drawings, I have more drawings than I need.
So if you take a look at the civil drawings, right on the civil drawings, it tells you the breakdown of all the units.
Yeah, let me see if I got it right here, I can tell, I can explain to you what you're talking about. I think it's on my big, on my big plan.
Okay.
Well, it showed 27 buildings.
Are you talking about Phase?
Phase One, showed 27 buildings, that were, 26 of them were triplexes and one duplex, on the plan that was online. It's all I can look at, is the plan that was online.
I'm just doing my math, I'm doing my math in my head, see if that's 80 units, it is.
That's 80, that's 80 units.
There you go.
So it's primarily gonna be triplexes, I'm just, it's a simple-
Again, there all varies, I can't, off of memory, what each road and says, you just gotta look at the site plan, it'll show like a duplex, it might show a triplex. You just need to look at the plan, it'll show you which type of building it is, and that typical elevation, that typical elevation applies to triplexes, duplexes.
I guess my question is to you, and again, and we're not gonna, I don't wanna belabor the point, because again, we're not at that, but is, but don't you know, I mean, is there, is there 26 triplexes and one duplex? I'm just curious, don't you know?
Off the top of my head, as I said, it was on the drawings, off the top of my head, I could get you that information for the next meeting if you'd like, no problem.
All right, all right, that's fine. Anyway, and I, and I can bring my big, I saw a breakdown on one of the documents. Mr. Freeman, in this big book I have that was supplied to me on your presentation, does that have the breakdown in there, do you remember? Because one of the, one of the documents I read has the big breakdown of-
We have a breakdown that I think is, well, there's not a breakdown as to the duplexes and the triplexes, but I think what you're thinking of is the unit breakdown, which describes the number of bedrooms as per the unit.
Yeah, one bedroom, two bedrooms, three bedrooms, I think I have that, yeah. All right.
But, no, I mean, it's a fair point that the gentleman asked, I'm sorry that, you know-
That's okay, that's okay, so here's what I suggest.
So we'll get you the information-
Yeah, at the next meeting, can you come down with a breakdown of what the buildings are? I mean, the apartments are fine, I mean, but, but, you know, that's a, can you come down with the, next, by the next meeting, it's a month away.
Yeah, it's a simple, it's a simple calculation, but we'll get you the answer.
But, but could you do that? And I understand his, because I, I mean, his maths works out perfect. 26 times 3 plus 2.
That's what I was looking at on the plan that was posted online.
All right, so, so, I probably forget your last name, Mr., but we'll come up with that, that'd be something they're gonna make note of, have to give us by next meeting.
Okay. On Winter Street side, the mailbox entrance, where the mailboxes are being placed, there is no parking for that 80 mailboxes. There should be at least one or two parking spots for those mailboxes, so that there's not a traffic jam there. There is nothing in the plans for that.
Fair enough. And I'm making these notes, too, because obviously that's something we would bring up with them.
I'm just, I'm just picking up stuff that I saw that I feel I want the best for the town.
Yeah, absolutely. I'm gonna give you one, I'm not trying to be mean, but some of the people, other people wanna speak, so I'm gonna give you one more. I think you had a third point, maybe?
Yep. I'm just saying that parking for the apartment units is nowhere near sufficient.
That's on my list already.
Okay.
All right, I'm gonna go to this gentleman behind you.
Born, Pond Street. Basically, you told us it's 240 units, correct? And three bedrooms per unit?
Not all units, no, it's gonna be one, two, and three bedrooms.
Okay. So we're looking at an increase in the school system of probably around 500 to 700 kids, based on the amount of units that are here. Who's paying the extra taxes for an increase of probably 500 more kids in the school system?
Well, again, that number, again, that, we have to get a-
You're gonna speak into the microphone, because people can't hear you.
Oh, we have to get a number from, like I said, the next meeting will be more department heads and whatnot here, but-
They don't have a clue unless they knew who's moving in.
Uh, but, but-
You said 80-something, which has gotta be ridiculous. If, just look at it this way, if we have an additional 500 kids added to the school system, who's paying the bill? Think about that, what it costs for a student, so you're looking at-
The town would pay any bill, if we had, if we had 80 new kids, the town would pay a bill.
Yeah, the town taxes are gonna go up.
Right, but, no, no, I'm saying-
So you need new teachers, you're gonna need more police, because the crime's gonna go up, traffic control, that's another issue in itself.
Well, we have, the police will be here the next meeting also. So that, we have it in-
But back to the students, though, if we have an additional 500 students, and whatever that cost is per student, who's paying the bills? So you telling us our taxes are gonna go up $2,000 a year, or $4,000 a year? Are the taxes gonna double in the town because of this project? I would suggest you'd need to look at those numbers.
All right, I-
And if the taxes are gonna go up, because of the burden they're gonna put on this town, shut it down. Simple as that.
Yes, sir.
Robert St. Pierre, 792 Summer Street. Since this is a general meeting, it's not like getting into the nitty-gritty.
Yes.
I do wanna point out, though, that four-story buildings, do we have enough fire equipment to handle that? That's pretty, you know, that's the stuff.
Right, and again, this-
It's one of those things, I, I know that you're gonna get that-
No, no, the fire department actually has to be in on this. They, they have to go to the fire to make sure that the equipment can go in and out.
Yep.
That all has to be done.
I was, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to-
No, that's okay, but I just want to know-
I was going to that point, that that's something that another department has to look at.
Yeah, so our plan is, similar to what we did years ago, Wayside Farm, we get the idea of what they wanna do, so people can see, I know there's been a lot going on, from what I understand, people are hearing different things, that's why initially I said this has nothing to do with the MBTA, because some people thought this was the MBTA, because that's coming, I think we have to file a plan by the end of the year, I think. Are we, by the end of the year, we have to file, you know, I don't know if you know what the MBTA is, they require, if you have a train, you have to file a plan this year of more housing around the area, or if you have a butter. Now, we're free to have another station, but we abut every town that has one. So we have to file a plan by the end of the year on how we're gonna provide more housing for that aspect. This is not that. But any plan that comes before us knowing that involves building multi-things, the fire department has to, you know, make sure that they can, their equipment can access it, that they can do what they need to do.
Sure.
Have the, you know, and they haven't, they haven't had the opportunity to do yet, because again, this is the initial meeting. So what we anticipate at our next meeting is the police, fire, schools, public works, hopefully to be here.
Okay.
And I don't think we're gonna make a decision at the next meeting either, I'm just telling you based on, because then it will be more involved as we start going on.
I don't know what kind of environmental impact-
Conservation Commission gets involved.
-are going on, but from my remembering of the preliminary plans for the pathway for the sewer line, gonna go right through and across Beaver Brook. So these guys, I really hope they have a comprehensive plan for the wildlife that's gonna be affected. There's a lot of beavers in Beaver Brook, now they came back.
That's why the name is, I always wondered.
Yeah, but they're back now, that's a protected species, so, I don't know. I'm concerned about the septic line.
I understand.
You can't, you can't build two, three, and four without that in place. Is there a timeline? I know, this is really-
Yeah, let's, I'd rather wait till those things till we get it with more, again, I'm not trying to cut anyone off, but they might, we're gonna go, we don't even know the answers yet.
Yeah, yeah, okay. I was just curious about the timeline, but it's still blue sky.
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
Sir.
Thank you. James Dolphol, 254 Central Street. So in regards to the next meeting, so we had a gentleman talk about the school system and, correct, 240 units, minimum 240, double anticipating families have two kids, you're looking at 480 easily. So there's a string definitely on there, so we're talking about a monetary impact to the citizens here. More so, though, I'm driving down Washington Street from Whitman into East Bridgewater, and I see a sign saying Tier One Water Ban, in effect. Okay, so you're talking water ban already, and you're gonna offer 240 more units? Where's that water gonna come from? Talk about stress on the system, okay? So we need to have a complete understanding for all of us, so we know what it's gonna do for us. Yes, 240 people can get a home, but we already live here, and we're already being impacted. So I hope on the August 7th meeting, there'll be a lot more people here.
Well, I hope the public works will be here.
So-
Because they have a, they're the ones who handle the water department, so they would have some-
Yeah, and I'd love to, I mean-
Because they would have to approve any kind of hookups.
Well, first of all, you need to tell us where the water's gonna come from, because we're being restricted as it is, so.
I live in, just so you know, we all live in town here, too, so we, I, we understand what you're talking about.
How you doing? Jerry Adams from 202 Sherwood Circle. I did hear a comment during this presentation about busing. Is that school buses, or is that MBTA buses?
No, no, that's, that's school bus turnarounds, am I, am I correct?
Yes.
A school bus turnaround. So like Wayside Farm, I drive up 18 every day to go to my office, and sometimes I sit behind the bus, they turn into Wayside Farm, they don't pick the kids up on 18.
Well, the reason I bring that up is because I know the next situation we'll be up against is the MBTA projects.
Yeah, I've said that, that every town in the state that abuts or holds, has to come up with a plan. As, as, we're not involved with that, by my understanding, is a town has come up with their plan by the end of the year.
Correct, so this is a start.
Well, this has nothing to do with the MBTA, though.
I get that, but if we have this densifying of the town, and then we have the MBTA densifying the town-
And the MBTA is not affordable housing.
We will be doing the infrastructure, we will be doing police department, we will be doing fire department, all that stuff will be impacted to every one of us in this town. We will become a city before you know it, all right? And I came down here from the city years ago to get away from all that, so we don't need to bring that to our town. Now, just as far as I'm talking tonight, you guys all work for us, basically, so tonight should be the time that you hear from the rest of us, so you know our points, so that way you can go to bat for us when we, when we come to these meetings.
Like I said, we volunteer here and we live in the town.
I get that.
So we, we have the-
I just wanted to make sure that we're all on the same page.
So we have the same, like questions you do. I just got my tax bill, well, we all just got them a couple of weeks ago. I was shocked it went up like it did.
Yeah.
So I know, I know, we all know where you come from.
All right, so as long as we're all on the same page-
But we also have to be realistic, to some extent, we only control a portion of this. So, because-
Because of the state.
State, state requires that if you do not have 10% affordable housing stock. Now again, I always, I moved from further, you know, up the, up Route 18, I thought this was affordable, but apparently we don't have enough of it, which surprised me.
So you're gonna mandate it to us, so what's the punishment if we don't comply?
Well, I gotta tell you, if we-
That might be better than what we're going through.
My, my own opinion, not talking to the board member, but as a person who works in this field to some extent, if we, if we turn them down completely, my own opinion, speaking individually, I think we're losing court and spending a lot of money, because we don't, because this, the state will, would force something-
So it would force it down our throats.
Something. This is, this is the opportunity to somewhat have some saying and stuff, like on Wayside Farm, we, we cut that down, what they want. Now, you familiar with Wayside Farm?
Yep.
And nobody would know it's a 40B. You don't know it's a 40B, because, I mean, I don't think anyone's ever said to me, you know, somebody said to me the other day, do we have 40B? I said, yeah, Wayside Farm. They're like, really? Because it doesn't look like a 40. People get in their head what a 40B looks like. So a 40B affordable housing, you'll notice that all the units on the exteriors look alike. The difference is, because I know somebody that lives in a 40B unit, instead of having the granite conduct troughs, they might have vermicah. You know, that's, that's what the inside, like, so, but, but, so you don't, but, but it's, it's a requirement by the state, because regardless of the housing stock, which is a different issue, the state lets 40B applicants leeway if the town does not have at least a threshold of 10%.
Yeah, so what the state wants is to densify the suburb, that's what they wanna do.
They wants every town and city to share in making, making housing affordable.
So-
Every state, every city and town.
One of the elephants in the room, what about the immigrant problem? Is that, you know, they're living in hotels right now, you don't think that this could be a situation in this town?
I, I can't tell you what, what people, what people are gonna move or whatnot. I mean, you know, that, to me, is a different issue.
Okay, but I wanna, I want, I want the issues out on the table now, so we can talk about it, because this is gonna be a long process, and it's, you know, there's gonna be a lot of things that come up.
Yeah, it's gonna be-
My last thing would be the sewerage, would be tied to Brockton, correct?
My understanding is that part will be tied to Brockton, and part of it's gonna be septic.
So what type of autonomy do we lose if we're tied to Brockton? I mean, now do we have to listen to what Brockton tells us to do when it comes to sewerage?
No, Brockton's allowing capacity to be used. Brockton is allowing, they're allowing so many gallons per day to be used from East Bridgewater.
So what happens is, this is like a slow creep, because this is gonna be like a slow creep, because what's gonna happen is down the road, when we need more infrastructure and more of this, we're not gonna be able to afford it, and we're gonna be tied more to Brockton, is what's gonna happen.
Well, a lot of towns tie into other towns municipal systems because they have the ability.
But I like to be an independent town, I think everybody here likes to be an independent town.
I'm really sad, I was shocked, but I said-
I think, I think everyone in this room wants to be an independent town, they don't wanna be dictated by another town or a city.
Mr. Chairman?
And, and I think, I think you're stretching it, well, I'll, I'll suggest is that the town-
This is a long, long game.
The town has asked Brockton, again, the town isn't us, we, the town's asked Brockton if we can access their sewerage system, and, and they said sure, and the reason they do, the reason these places do that, I think women's tied into, I think most of women's tied into Brockton. The reason they do that is because septic systems work better when they're working close to capacity. So this school has its own sewerage system, but it's out back into the pumping station. But, but the town expanded it. I wish it expanded down Central Street where I live, but they didn't, but they expanded it to the surrounding area, so to the best of my knowledge, like CVS is on it, somebody else on, because especially during the summer, the septic system doesn't get used too much in the school, and that's when it gets costly, because lack of use would ruin a, a town's sewerage system, like this, like we have here in the school. So they need, they increase the capacity. And I, I don't know if you can check the selectmen down, if they charge, if they charge CVS for use, I don't know. You know, like those are the type they use it. So that's all the, so Brockton has sewerages that goes, you know, down Winter Street, let's say, to a certain point, Alger Road or whatever that is?
Yep.
And that becomes Winter Street. And so, from what I understand, the town has, the selectmen, I believe, have entered into an agreement, and it was, it was voted on town meeting a couple of years ago, that entered an agreement with Brockton for so much usage. And we will have the selectmen here at the next meeting, because, you know, again, I think a year ago they entered an agreement with Mr. Freeman, correct, they entered agreement?
You're correct. Firstly, was before this project and-
Before this project, it's a year or two ago, they, they-
Right, first there was the, first there was the intermunicipal agreement between Right, first there was the, first there was the intermunicipal agreement between the two municipalities.
And the state and the selectmen entered an agreement with you to get this, to get you the first letter of approval or agreement. Selectmen entered, I see in the-
Right, they had an intermunicipal agreement already before this project ended.
They had to do before you came here.
And then, as I said in my presentation and in the application, yes, there's a sewer agreement between my client's LLC and the town-
And the town signed it off, I saw the agreements in here. So I, I don't, I can't tell you if you're under the control of another town. All I know is that it's not unusual.
No.
There are other, like, I think Abbott gets tied into Brockton too, it's not unusual because if, if they have the capacity, and obviously they pay for their use.
The last thing I want to say is just look into a firmly furthering fair housing, that's what this is all about. Thank you.
Yeah. You go identify yourself and your address, please.
Christie Barry, 778 Summer Street. My main concern right now is Winter Street. I travel it every day going to work. I'm surprised that the traffic survey did not take into consideration the condition of that road, how narrow it is, we're talking about accidents. There are no accidents because we're courteous and we're a small town, there's rarely any construction vehicles on there. In the morning, I do pass a bus that goes into the last street before the Whitman East Bridgewater line, and the bus where I have to pull over to the side of the road, because we both won't fit at certain spots. That's just one problem with Winter Street, it's not wide enough for construction vehicles and cars to pass. Secondly, the water table is so high in our area, I don't understand how this is gonna work. There's times that Winter Street is shut down, because it's flooded across the field right after Captain's Way, so we have to detour to Alger. This hasn't been fixed in all the years I've been here. The road crumbles when the water, the rain table is so high, the road crumbles, and there's water pooling on the road all the time. I don't understand how we could have this amount of construction vehicles going down this tiny, thin road where it's highly populated. I just don't understand. So that's one of my concerns, because nobody's discussing that, and I think there will be accidents, I think there'll be problems with the road, I think it will give way. If you go around to Alger, which would be our alternate route at the end of Summer Street, I'd have to take a left to go to Alger, it is just as bad on that side. So anyone who hasn't traveled the road, I think you should, because you should see where they're proposing to have these construction vehicles entering, never mind the new tenants who are gonna live there. So it's a huge concern, I can't think of a worse spot in our town to do this, never mind the wetlands. I know there's a conservation survey, I heard there's waivers that are being requested, I know we're gonna discuss waivers a different day, but if you live in the area, if you travel in the area, you would, and you consider what we're about to do, you would disagree with it. That's all I have to say.
I don't know that these two gentlemen are gonna be the last two, and then we'll see if you have any kind of response, because it's already, what's he, 30? So, yeah, I don't know which one of us hear first, he's deferring to you. He's deferring to you to go ahead.
Thank you. Roger Madera, 433 Walnut Street. So my first question, our first thought, is, did the traffic assessment really take place during COVID? Is that true?
I'm gonna look at it right now, I don't actually feel it.
Because, to be honest with you, then that has to be redone immediately, before we could even consider it to go forward. I, I work from home occasionally, a couple of days a week, but I drive right down Washington Street occasionally during school hours. If we're adding 480 at a minimum students, how many more buses is that gonna be on Washington Street in the morning, both in the morning and the afternoon, going on 18?
Wait a minute, I'm confused, we're not touching Washington Street.
Your buses are gonna go to the central school, or go, go to the, the elementary school, aren't they?
But they'll be coming down 18, or coming down summer, winter.
They're gonna go right by your house, aren't they?
Yeah, but I-
Or they're gonna come down Walnut Street.
No, but, do you say Washington Street?
Uh, uh, Central Street, I'm sorry.
Yeah, no, no, but, yeah, I mean, you get the middle school buses, but there, but there's, yeah, I mean, there could be-
My point is, there're gonna be a lot more buses.
You were saying Washington Street, so I'm thinking that's on the other side from where, there's nothing going on on Washington Street.
Do you, you drive 18, though, I think everybody-
That's Bedford Street.
Bedford Street, 18, Route 18, Bedford Street, whatever it is.
Oh, okay.
How many more buses are gonna be on there compared to the COVID time, and 480 more students, and how many students are gonna be on those buses? Especially on the 18 where this is gonna be, and how many times are the buses gonna be going in and out of there for the bus stop?
Oh, I-
480 students.
You know, I live, I get back on, I get back on my driveway sometimes, ah, you know where I live.
I know, that's my point.
I, I, I don't wanna get ahead of the game, but I'd like, I'd like to, and I don't wanna put anyone on the, I think they're sorry from the school committee in here, but I don't want to, but I'd like to know exactly how many students they forecast, because, I mean, literally, like I said, someone mentioned to me, based on one bedroom, you know, what you get, two bedroom, you know, how many kids you get, somebody's ringing up. And, so I, I'd like to hear some, because, I mean, I, you know, I don't know if it's gonna be there, I agree, I'd like to know exactly what we're talking about with the number of students.
It's valid, it's a valid, but I think, I think the first thing, like I said, this COVID relationship with traffic is absolutely, this, it can't even be considered to go forward before we get that. The second thing is, you have 240 units, potentially four people each, we get once-a-week trash pickup, how much traffic is gonna be generated, how many times are they gonna have to pick up trash in, on, in those, in that, those areas daily? Daily? You got 40 units per, right? 160 units, you're talking about four people in a household, you get a once-a-week trash. So how, like, I just, I just, I wonder how much trash is actually gonna be going in and out of traffic from a trash truck in and out of that thing daily, which needs to be considered prior to COVID or post-COVID traffic on Bedford Street. Last thing, is you said the buses, the buses were for school buses.
Yeah.
Is there a plan for an MBTA bus, or a Bat bus, or whatever type of public, to go into those, into those units as well?
I, I-
Because that's another traffic issue.
Yeah, I have no idea, that's, that, there hasn't been approached by anybody, no one's indicated to me that Bat buses are gonna come in, and, or, or maybe even, most likely Bat before MBTA, I'm guessing.
Okay.
And I don't, I haven't heard anyone even bring that up.
Okay, so it's a new generation now, right? We have Waze, right? I get more traffic down Walnut Street than I've ever seen in my life because of Waze, okay? We also get traffic because of Amazon. Okay, so how are we gonna get an Amazon truck? How many times are we gonna get Amazon trucks into those 240 units? Okay? What about Grubhub? What about all these delivery services? Where are they gonna be parking? If they're, if there's not enough spots for mail, um, mail slots, are we gonna have enough for 10, 10 families to get this, a delivery of food at the same time, at 6:00 at night, prime hours? That's not in the traffic assessment.
Not enough parking?
There's not enough parking, period! 100, 240 units and what, I think you totaled up 240 parking lots.
And I think we discussed, I was gonna bring that up at our next, that's the first gentleman.
So, and the last thing is, where can we find the waivers? Where are the waivers, and where can we get them, so we don't have to spend the time today, so we can be better educated for the next time?
The what they're looking for, you mean?
The lawyers spoke of.
I, I think it's in their application, which would be on record at the town.
I don't know if, I think it's online, but it's at Town Hall.
It's at Town, I don't know if it's online, I don't know, again, because I don't do it there, but my understanding, is that online, is that online, can people?
All the waivers are listed, could you tell us all where they're, they might be listed under?
Yeah, I mean, I know it's in the book, I just know it was on, it's on, I got it in the book right here.
Is it on the website?
But I say it's on the website.
Waivers requested.
That's what you wanna look at online.
Okay, thank you.
All right, I bet you, okay, thank you, I said, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, this will be the second-to-last person, this young lady will be the last. Again, because we're gonna get more answers, there're gonna be more people here next, more like town officials that will have answers, that, you know, the fire department, I'm not, I can't say I'm not a fireman, but they will be, they will be here next, so this young lady will be last, sir, but thank you for waiting.
Yeah, hi, my name is Scott Oshewski, I live at 110 Beaver, right on the edge of Bridgewater and, East Bridgewater and Beaver on Winter Street. And so I think somebody had mentioned 240 units, but there's 80 units that are set to go in on Winter Street, according to the-
Yes.
-handout. So like the woman had said, Winter Street and Beaver Street aren't designed for the traffic that goes there now. If you have 80 units, that's 100 cars a day, twice a day, on Beaver, Winter, Alger, and cutting through Captain Alleyway. I run that street, and I'm like a ping pong ball, because I don't wanna be on the same side as when a car is coming down, and it's not safe for them to kinda go around me if there's a car coming the other way. So how is it safe for anybody if there's 120 cars a day more, two times a day, on those streets?
Well, this is what our peer reviewer will look at, what they're, what they're presented, so I, so the person that works for us will be looking at stuff like this.
There's no sidewalk.
I think there's, is a sidewalk proposed? No, okay, I just, I, I do have the plan in front of me, all right, that, that will be addressed.
There's, there'll be a sidewalk, how far?
Right, yeah, oh, yeah, and like I said, you know-
For like the one block outside each of them?
We will have an engineer review everything that's been submitted to us, that comes up with these questions. I know which street, because again, I've lived here for 34 years, so I understand which street is, I cut up to Alger Street to get to Brockton, that's the cut-through that I use. So I know that there's, even that street doesn't have sidewalks, I don't think Alger has sidewalks, and Winter Street doesn't have sidewalks. A lot of streets in this town don't have sidewalks, for whatever reason, I don't know why. But that'll all be looked at, and again, we, you know, we're gonna send letters out to all the department heads to show up at our next meeting if they can, including DPW, which oversees streets.
I mean, I think, you know, like, like the woman had said, like, common sense, like, you know, this is the width of the street, and two cars, if it's a big truck, then one has to pause for another one to go. And so if you're building 80 units, I don't know construction, I'm not working on that.
No, I don't disagree.
That's a lot of big traffic for a long time, you know, Winter Street, Beaver Street, Alger Street, going through, you know, Captain Alleyway, that's a street, Captain Alleyway?
Yeah.
You know, and that neighborhood's got a ton of kids, so it just, I, seems unsafe to me, and I'm not an engineer, I just don't know how it can make sense logically.
All right, point, yeah, well, like I said, we're writing the notes down. I'm gonna go to this young lady, and we're gonna, then, the last person that will speak other than us, if we have anything, will be the, will be the applicant, yes?
Hi, Nancy DeChambeau, 448 Bedford Street, Route 18, and the traffic has been down since COVID. It used to be completely backed up all the time. Even now, there's less traffic, there's still three or four accidents a day down at Drop a Market, and I came to the March 7th, 2023 school budget hearing, and Liz Legault said we're gonna need teachers enough for 160 different speaking children that are gonna attend our school. I don't know if anybody else saw that meeting, I attended it, and she was banging on a table saying we're gonna need that many people with different languages to run our schools. And then, if you look at the papers, you have preference, preference for occupancy, that kinda changes a few things. And then I watched the Board of Health meeting on Monday night, and this project is 10,000 gallons over, but, over the limited amount. There, it can only be 26,000 gallons per day. There are 10,000 gallons per day over for this project, is what they said on the Board of Health meeting that I just previously watched. I don't know if anybody else has seen that, or the March 7th, 2023 school budget meeting, which people should all know about, because it's saying we're gonna need 160 different languages in our schools, kinda says a lot, or, did I make up the meeting?
I, no, no, I, I-
I said-
I didn't know that many languages. The, the septic issue is, is, is the Board of Health, so, there are certain things that we cannot, by law, if you look at, I mean, now we get all these things, you know, I got a Chapter 48 handbook for zoning law from the state, and it says right there, we, we can't overlook any kind of state regulations, and septic is one that's controlled by Title V, which is a state regulation.
But it's not septic, it's the hooking into Brockton.
Yeah, I don't know the numbers there, because I-
And, so, and what's gonna happen? We're just gonna act, act like we don't get on water bans, and we were just gonna say, oh, that, that doesn't matter to the people that are already here, we're just gonna be restricted water? I don't, it makes no, there's no common sense here, at all.
I don't disagree.
I mean, it's just crazy. Thank you.
All right, thanks, Nancy. All right, Mr. Freeman, if you wanna wrap it up?
Yeah, just briefly, thank you, Mrs. Chairman, again, for the record, Peter Freeman, representing the applicant. So seriously and sincerely, we always respect questions, there are some good questions, we, rather than fly off the cuff, you know, with answers, there were a lot about traffic, and I just briefly talked to Jeff, we will methodically go through the questions, come up with answers. If it needs to be redone because of COVID, although I think there was an adjustment, and your peer reviewer would probably comment on that, but we'll do whatever the professional standards require, so that's point one. Just a couple of quick things, someone mentioned the Conservation Commission and waivers, we don't need waivers, because you don't have a special local bylaw for wetlands, it's all under the state, so whatever the State Wetlands Protection Act requires, we will be going to the Conservation Commission. Then, the, well, the point that was just made about the, turns out, the sewer, not the septic, you know, we've been transparent, we included the sewer agreement, if people are interested, again, it's on file, they can read it presumably online, the sewer agreement with the town as to how the allocation-
That's online too, right? Dot, do you know? So if you go online, you'll see something called sewer agreement, that the selectmen entered into with the applicant, and that will tell you about the sewerage, and I assume it's on the sewerage, or sewer agreement. So when you go online, you should be able to find it. Mr. Freeman, I need to cut you off.
Sure, no, that's okay, and I'm not gonna go through all the points, as I said, because we'll be methodical for the next hearing, but before I forget, because I think it should be announced, August 7th is the date, and it's gonna be here, I believe you said.
Yes.
What, what time? Will be 7?
7 o'clock.
7, okay.
And nobody will get any new notice. So the next meeting, unless somehow, I think we, we already cleared it with the school?
Yes.
So it's, it's, there's no, no notice, this is a continuation of this, so you won't get any new notice. So the next hearing will be at 7:00, August 7th, and that's a Wednesday night. All right, at, at that time, I'm gonna, do you have anything else, can I wanna continue this, so we can all-
Yeah, no, I, just one quick thing.
Yeah, absolutely.
Somebody mentioned, are the total parking spaces 240 units at 415 total spaces, so just so everybody knows.
Yeah, just so you know, I still have a question with that too, if that's-
No, no, we'll, we'll address it.
Yeah, and the other, that was right. So, Dot, can we make sure that all department heads, police chief, fire chief?
DPW.
DPW, school superintendent or business manager?
Police.
Get present? Selectmen, yes, I'm surprised they're not here tonight, but that's okay. And if the town administrator can be here?
He's here.
Okay, but Charlie, you can be here, tell him, sorry, I see.
Probably, I'll be here.
All right, and, what other person was I thinking of?
World Health.
World Health?
Yep, they're here.
And they're here, but, but, let's, let's see if we can come up with some, everyone's heard the questions, I think fire department will be big, and if, if John Haines wants to send somebody from the water department, that would be helpful. All right, so I'm gonna move to continue this. Kevin, you second it? All right, the, all favor.
Aye.
All right, so this is continued to August 7th, 7:00 here.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for showing up.